Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance tonight and welcome. This is the City of Cotwood Heights. It is our work session for Tuesday, August 18th. That's a little after 5:00 PM. And we will begin by, I need to read a determination of why this meeting is online. And this determination states pursuant to Utah Code annotated 524-207 for the city's mayor as the chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, and I find that conducting a meeting at the anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. With that being said, the next item on your agenda is the review of the business meeting. Of course, we'll have, welcome, and I'll read the determination again, and we'll have a pledge of allegiance. We have citizen comments, want your feedback real quickly, see if there's any objections. According to our code of ordinances, we are allowed to limit the amount of public comment to one hour. I propose we do that today. And unlike last meeting where we did a minute and a half, I'm proposing two minutes. It seems like we cut a few people off who could have used this a little bit more time. That still allows about 30 people to comment. Any questions, concerns about the one hour and two minutes?
Do we know how many have signed up currently?
An hour ago, we had about 18 or 20. So.
That should work.
Yeah, should work fine, hopefully. We will then have a staff report, which is a financial report from Scott with respect to the latest numbers. Hopefully, they continue to be positive. We have, I think it's three action items. The first action item is to declare certain properties surplus, which is mostly his computer monitors. But Tim, you want to talk about that at all? Or Scott?
Yeah, Scott, is Scott on? Scott will talk about that.
Yeah, excuse me, there's about, I can't remember the exact number, about 80 monitors that were surplusing that are older monitors with not very good resolution and stuff. That's about it.
Okay, I understand we use the same process we use to surplus items in the sheriff's office, which goes out on the website, people bid and they're sold.
Yes.
Next item of business is adopting the 2019 Salt Lake County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So Matt, do you want to talk about that briefly?
It's actually Paul, Assistant Chief Brenner.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, yeah, it's an emergency management plan. So I sent out a briefing to the council and you mayor here a week or so ago, kind of briefly explaining what that is. Cooperative effort between Salt Lake County and the local agencies to identify risks and hazards within the community and hopefully to prevent or present options to deal with those in the future. So pretty straightforward, required. We should adopt it. And most agencies in the county have already done that and will do over the course of the next week or so.
Yeah, thank you. And I did read through it, and I guess it's a result of the county receiving a grant, and they've held trainings, and we've had so much staff attend those trainings, et cetera, so.
Yep, exactly. We had active participation in it, input, and they helped us draft it. And like I say, it's a requirement if we want federal funds post disaster.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that action item? Pretty straightforward. The last action item, which is a pre-bid, accepting a bid and approving a construction contract with Black Forest Paving for the East Jordan Canal Trail. It's for about 124,000, something we, I think we went through it in our last meeting as well. Matt, any comments on that?
Matt isn't actually here tonight, and I'm addressing this tonight. And we went through a bid process. We had six bidders on this. We selected Black Forest Paving to bid. Like you said, it was 124,000. It's to actually do the asphalt trail approximately eight feet in width, include some gate elements, not for those that are going through, but just to access the canal area, which was a requirement of Salt Lake City that owns the property. And so we're recommending approval of this and look forward to start. We need to get this project done by November. There's no out-of-pocket cost for us. It comes from State Outdoor Recreation Fund and also TAP dollars from UDOT. And so like I say, we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Whatever we can add to our trail system, I think that's a plus. So glad to see that moving forward. And we'll have that on our business meeting agenda. Then we have a consent calendar item, which is looks like CDR Board Meeting Minutes for July and City Council Emergency Meeting Minutes of August 3rd. Okay. All right, any questions on the business meeting agenda? All right, hearing that, we'll move back to our work session. And it will seem a little bit redundant, but let's come back to item A under staff reports, the All Hazards and Mitigation Plan. And Paul, maybe you can give us a little bit more detail on it.
Sure. Shouldn't take too long presenting in the business session, but basically this plan was drafted as a requirement to the FEMA regulations back in August of last year. City manager Tingey and Matt Ship, Mike Johnson, myself and Julie such, all had the opportunity to attend some planning sessions. The contractor that was hired did individual sessions with Julie and I, helping us to update our hazard mitigation plan that was first put into place back in '09, last updated in 2015. So it's just a continuation of the process. It'll be reviewed every five years. So 2025, we'll be doing this again. And like I say, we would ask you to adopt the plan. It's about an 1,100-page plan of which 200 or 300 pages are the Salt Lake County portion. The rest of it's all annexes. Our portion is about 31 pages.
Is there a fiscal note tied to this at all to the?
There is not. No, there is not.
Any questions of Paul regarding that plan? Good to have. Hearing that, we'll move on to another topic that I think is really timely for many reasons. On-street parking permit discussion. Mike, Josh, you want to talk about that? I think this is regarding Ferguson Canyon overflow.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll put this up on the screen here just to provide a discussion point. You can't see that? Okay, let me know. Otherwise, I'll assume you can. So I think this discussion is followed by a number of concerns we've heard, especially this year with usage of Ferguson Canyon being very high and maintaining that high usage rate throughout the entire summer. We usually don't see that. But just as outdoor recreation has grown in popularity, we've seen a number of issues and heard from residents that live in this area, just some concerns or issues they're having. So this is kind of a summary of what we're going to address tonight. Certainly, there may be more concerns out there than this, but I think at a high level, this covers the, you know, the intention of the conversation here. We've seen the following issues in the area, in the neighborhood streets around the Ferguson Canyon Trailhead. We've seen a high volume of traffic and on-street parking by trail users, both within permit parking areas and outside of it. And then the traffic itself, you know, there's 12 or 13 stalls upright at the trailhead, and those fill up fairly quickly on the high-use days. But everyone still drives by them to see if they're open. So outside of parking, you have this constant flow of traffic in the area that we've heard from. It has caused kind of a concern among neighbors there in recent years. We've seen a desire by residents recently to expand the permit parking area. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what that looks like and how that's accomplished. And again, just that consistent traffic circulating neighborhood streets, looking for trail parking if it's not available right at the trailhead. And then off-leash dogs and some signage issues, we've heard from some residents as well, and I'll touch on that very quickly. So as it is today, this is a generalized map of all the permit parking signs. It says no parking, but it's just a symbol here. That represents where we have signs on the street today that indicate it's parking can be by permit only, meaning residents and guests are the only users allowed to park on the street. So trail users would not be allowed to do that. So this shows you where we are today, where the signs are, the kind of the scope of the area that is covered today. And I can come back to that anytime. So I've just kind of presented a few options here for consideration or options that are available for how to mitigate some of the concerns we've been hearing. And I think this is just an introduction to a discussion, so happy to consider more options as well. With the current permit parking, we have, that I can find, no established record of a list of parking permits or who can or cannot have parking permits. So even though it's a permit parking zone, we don't have a database showing who's allowed and which cars are allowed to park there and which aren't. I think that creates, you know, a little bit of a challenge when we enforce. We have to verify whose car can be there and whose can't. And if you had a parking permit system in place and well documented, then it'd be very easy to check if a car is on the list or not, or if they have a permit or not, and enforce a little more efficiently there. So one option we have today that we can implement, and we've ordered tags for cars and guest permits and everything, so we're ready to roll this out as soon as possible, is we can issue parking permits and require them to be displayed in all parked vehicles in that permit parking area and begin just consistently enforcing, collaborating obviously with the police department and code enforcement, enforcing any vehicles that do not have that permit parking. Like I said, we have the parking tags available. I think if we implemented this, the approach here we would take is we'd send letters to everyone within the area, letting them know they have a certain amount of days to come in and apply and get their parking permit. We'd give them their tag or mail it to them and tell them to display it in their car. Those are valid for five years. And then we have guest permits as well, when there are guests of the residents there, and they are valid for a maximum of 45 days. But they would be required to come in and request guest permits anytime they have visitors or guests that want to park on the street. What this would do is it would make it easier to enforce if there's a clear record of who is and is not permitted. It'd be kind of, you know, you walk along there and if there's a valid permit in a car, then it's good to be there. And if there's not, then it can get a ticket or a citation or however that's done. The, I guess the one downside of this is it does place a responsibility or a burden on the residents to make sure their vehicles are up to date and are properly permitted. But that is an option we can do today. We're ready to roll out on that. And just wanted to have this discussion before we do that. Second option is expanded permit parking. We've heard from a number of neighbors up in the area with an interest in doing this and how to do this. We have a pretty clear ordinance. It's pretty detailed, actually, that explains how to obtain expanded permit parking areas or how to implement that. We looked, I know there were some questions on if the council can just implement this through council action or policy. We looked throughout the entire city code and especially really thoroughly in the parking code. And it all comes back to starting with a petition. So a petition needs to be submitted. It doesn't say who needs to submit it. Anyone can submit the petition, but that petition needs to include signatures from 51% of residents within the proposed expanded parking area. 51%, that would be in favor of establishing that permit parking zone. That is submitted to me and to the Community and Economic Development Department for review and recommendation. And then we're required to give notice of a public hearing 10 days before a hearing is held. That hearing would be notified or published in the newspaper. Mailers would be sent to the residents in the affected areas, and then there would be signs posted in the affected areas, just physically in the area as well. The hearing is held, and then council action must take place no later than 30 days after that hearing. There are some review criteria there. You know, I think just preliminarily, there's a pretty solid case with the commuter traffic or the out-of-neighborhood traffic that parks here to, probably to favorably recommend that, but we would need to look at that in more detail. But that's the process. It doesn't take too long, but it's not something that can be enacted immediately. We've got to have that petition submitted. That's the key to starting everything. And then we have to notice at least 10 days before the council hearing. It states council action is no later than 30 days after the hearing. It doesn't state that the council has to wait at all to take action. So I think you could hold the hearing and take action on the same night. And then there's another option that's somewhat related here. There is a parking ordinance provision that allows the city engineer, which is Matt Ship in this case, to place signs or paint the curb to prohibit or restrict parking where a dangerous condition would be created or traffic flow is disrupted. This doesn't give the city authority to create a permit parking program. This is more like a red curb. No parking, restricting parking for everybody, residents, visitors, everyone. And we've heard some concerns from nearby residents here of this as well. The picture on the screen is an intersection. It's hard to see here, but there's quite a bit of slope on the road here at this intersection. And I think when cars park along this curved intersection point, the site visibility around the corner becomes a little difficult. So that's one example of something we could look at and implement, you know, just a no parking zone right in the vicinity of that intersection to make sure that site visibility is good. Another example, this is just an example, not saying we recommend this or not at this point, but if you have a narrower road and you have parking on both sides, it could impede two-way traffic on that road. So up on Timberline Drive, I think the road is narrower, prospect is a little bit wider, but that's something we could look at as well. And this does not require a hearing. This is just something that the city can take action to do, but that does restrict parking for everybody. And I'll touch on this quick. I think we're all familiar with this, but there are some long-term solutions being worked on. Obviously, the Ferguson Canyon overflow parking, which will provide 65 to 70 stalls that should provide some relief to the congestion we see in this area. Obviously, the parking will help, but very important to keep in mind, and something that we need to work on to implement, and we will, is really solid wayfinding and directional and informational signage, letting people know to park down below, providing wayfinding signage, telling people to stay on the sidewalk and guiding them up to that trailhead, because it is a bit of a hike to get from the parking to the trailhead. Now, we've seen something to a lesser extent. There's a trail just down the road in Sandy, south of Bell Canyon, Rocky Ridge or something like that, where you actually park outside along Wasatch in a small lot, and you walk through a neighborhood. They've got good signage, and it doesn't seem to be an issue. So the signage is critical, though, to this long-term solution. And then we'll talk about this more at the next meeting, but the planning commission just finished their consideration of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Plan. And one of their recommendations that the council will need to deliberate on and consider as the plan is presented to you is they recommended actually that once this parking lot down below is completely built out, that the parking stalls up near the canyon be converted solely into accessible stalls for amphitheater use only. And then all trail parking, park down below and hike through the neighborhood. And I think that was, that recommendation came largely from the very extensive public comment we received for that. I think we had about 75 different public comments, and a lot of them touched on the concern in this area. So I'll present that in more detail, but that's some of the long-term solutions or the long-term things we can look at in how to manage traffic. And then before we open up this discussion, just there were some questions about signage and especially signage that encourages dogs or states that dogs are required to be on leash. This is just a, I've got a few pictures here that show the signage at the trailhead. This is one. This is, there's a lot of information on there. The first bullet point there, it's pretty small, but it does say dogs must remain on leash at all times. And then there are additional signs. There's the one on the left there that's outlined in red, says all dogs must be on leash. Violators will be prosecuted. The big sign blown up on the right is actually the, it's the smaller sign on the pole there. So it's the same thing, but that also says that dogs must remain on leash and references the nuisance ordinances and the ordinances there that can be enforced. So there is signage for off-leash dog restrictions. Certainly, it's something we can look at and how to improve that as well. And then I think a component of that also is just enforcement, which has been, we've been doing lately as well. Okay, that's my presentation. So I'll turn it over back to you, and I can jump around with any questions you have.
Well, I have several questions, but this is council member Michael's district. So I'd like to hear from her first, kind of what her recommendation is based upon her constituents in that community. Christine, you want to?
Thanks, Mayor. Sure. Well, I know this, this is an important topic, not just for me, because the mayor came with me to meet a couple constituents, which I greatly appreciate that support from the mayor. And I also know council member Peterson is keenly aware of these issues too, and is concerned and wants to see some improvement here. So I think generally speaking, while I haven't talked to all the council members, I know that the majority of us, who I have spoken to, understand that this is an issue. And I think him has, and both Mike have seen all the emails that at least I've received that I've passed on to you. So I want to thank you, Mike, for putting together what I think is a very comprehensive slide deck informing the issues. If you could go back, I think, to the picture of the cars on the street, I think that would be a great place to start. I think one of my concerns is, I understand that it's going to take some time to get the parking permit process going, and it needs to come from a resident. Is it something that I, could I submit the petition? And can I get the 51 signatures if we haven't seen movement from the residents themselves?
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance does not state who the petition needs to come from. It just needs to be submitted. So I believe so, yeah.
And because I know that there was a resident, I think, is maybe last week or the week before that was, I thought, going to be pushing forward on that process. Have you heard anything more lately?
Yeah, I heard, just after I sent the information, the parking permit, you know, the petition process information, he said he'd be out of town for a few days, but then would circle back on it. I haven't heard anything in the last week, but he does have all the information.
Okay, well, I guess, Mike, if we can work collaboratively, if that's okay with Tim, if you can reach out to that resident and see what they're thinking, and if they're not moving, I'm happy to take the lead on that and knock on doors and get signatures if that's what I need to do. And I'm sure the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee would be supportive of that as well. So that's the first step. The other thing that you brought to our attention is the, is what Matt Ship and his team can do in terms of not parking in certain areas. I'd be curious to know what, how quickly we can get some of that done. Because I worry that we have to wait so long for the parking lot to be built that we're going to constantly hear from our residents about the tightness of the road and cars being parked on both sides and the difficulty and the safety concerns. So I'd be really curious how quickly we can implement some of those actions.
So I can have, I can have our engineers go out and evaluate based on what the code standards are and take a look at that and then make that determination and get the work done that we need on that. So.
Yeah, this picture that's on there currently is, I mean, there's a lot of traffic that definitely slows down traffic through the neighborhood, but it also could be somewhat cumbersome, that you could do one side if that was like a half-step, depending on, you know, what we ultimately do with the residents.
You can. I think the one thing we'll want to be a little sensitive to, like a street like this, where you do have homes on both sides, is that immediate measure would restrict parking to everybody. So I don't know if that's the, you know, I think that's a last resort to restrict parking fully down a road, unless it's an area like, you know, like this here, where you don't have homes on one side of the road. And the road's a little tighter there, but we can coordinate with Public Works and Engineering and have them do that site assessment.
No, no, I expect that they will, the last, some of the residents may very well be willing to do that rather than the other. But that's, that's the only way to find that out is to get out and talk to them.
Mike, can I assume that this pitch with all these cars parked, are these cars parked illegally because of the current signage already in place?
I think this is down, this was submitted as a public comment for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Plan. I believe that this, I don't know, can you see my mouse on the screen? I think that's this stretch of street right here.
And the reason I raise that question, because obviously, one thing we've not talked about is whatever we do is critical to have a level of accountability. And so enforcement is also going to be a piece of this. So Robbie, any comments? Or Dan on enforcement, once we, because to me, it's a no-brainer. We did the same thing on Banbury a few years back, and it worked out appropriately.
Those cars are parked legally in that picture there. We have been up for the last six weeks up there on the weekend, educating, citing, dealing with dog off-leash complaints and things like that. And it's been relatively quiet as far as the people up there, they've been parked legally. People have had most of their dogs on the leash, and it's been, it's been pretty good this last six weeks.
Okay, thank you. Just like Christine mentioned, we sat in the front yard of a resident who lives right across the street from the amphitheater. And what's really amazing is how many vehicles drive past the parking stalls, fill and turn around, come back down. So just the amount of traffic. Another item I think is appropriate is to, while we proceed on the petition, is to do some traffic counts. I know we talked about that in the past, but I'm not sure we've done it yet. That's nothing I'd throw out there. But fundamentally, I'm personally very supportive of the parking restrictions, going through the process, expediting as fast as we can, because sitting there and watching it, especially with the pandemic, I think it's made the issue even greater with the number of participants that are going up there. So the petition, traffic counts, mat, signage, as soon as possible, yeah.
I guess I have a, I still have my list of things if I might, sorry, Peterson. I guess another issue that's been brought to my attention are the number of bloggers that say that Ferguson Canyon is one of the top 10 places to bring your dogs off-leash. I know Melissa Fields from the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee, you know, she goes above and beyond, I feel like, for our city and should be recognized. But this particular instance, she actually reached out to the, I don't know, girls, girls who hike or some blogger and said, hey, you know, this is incorrect on your blog. Can you, can you take that off and rewrite it? And had seen success with that. So, so Tim, I don't know if Tim Beery has the ability or someone on our team, but to go through the various blogs that are out there that talk about Ferguson Canyon and off-leash ability and those things and try to write those misconceptions or misnomers, I think, would also be helpful. And then I know with the signs that you showed, Mike, if you can click to the signs, and luckily, we have council member Peterson here, who's our sign guy. But I, the signage is good, but that sign on the second, if you can go to the second slide, the next slide, Mike?
That one?
Yep, that, that, that thing that says attention, dog owner. Yep, that, that, that thing that says attention dog owners, yep, go to the.
Oh, yeah, there must be a delay, sorry.
It's okay. It was there and then it left. Anyway, um, that's, that is, that is one tiny sign as far as I can tell. So, so, so Councilmember Peterson, I know um, somebody suggested maybe we could do like a double-sided sign that can be propped up like a triangle. Some of the mountain trails use them or a, a single larger sign that would encompass. I just, I think that, I think we could maybe try to do a little bit better, different here with the signage. But I'd be, love to hear your perspective, Councilmember.
Christine, I, I think most people, they're already on their way. And when I, I've hiked up there recently, there were a lot of dogs that were well behaved, but also were not on the leash, but they were going up the face. They weren't going up into the actual canyon itself. But it needs to not be a big paragraphs. I think some highlighted points are good, but a lot of these people have already got the information before they start up the canyon, or wherever they're going. And if there's a blog that's kind of misleading them, it might say, well, it may be not enforced, you know, as far as the dog's off-leash. But I think there's, there's obviously a lot of issues up there. I don't know how seasonal it is. I'm sure it slows way down once the snow flies, but I know climbers, they climb year round. But uh, I'm sure I've been up there and sometimes you have to drive blocks away. And I don't know if we've got studies if people are staying overnight, overnight parking. Uh, I know some people are rude. They park, where it's very uh intrusive on the homeowners and it is definitely an issue, but no one is, not everyone is going to be happy, even the, the lot down below. I'm not sure how the neighbors feel about people hiking up, through the neighbor, neighborhood. I'm, I'm hoping that would be a better solution, but it's definitely something that's going to take some, real work. And in the, in, when it snows, those steep inclines, uh, parking is even more important to mitigate the slide ends and different things like that could happen if, if weather is uh, is an issue. Besides, the clear view is a problem on that corner that was shown. I've known, I know people that have parked on those and it's very hard. Line of sight's really difficult on those corners.
I'm just gonna jump in and agree with Christine totally, you know, doing a lot of park signage in my career. I think this is, we can do a much better job of communicating our message at the entry to this trail, by consolidating and reemphasizing certain points and make it real clear with, you know, and we can, we can have a little, little verbiage, little paragraph things at the bottom, but the message has to be very clear. And I, I agree, we just need to reevaluate and re, reformat how we're going to present it, you know. Can you see that we have one, but it looks like it was an original sign that we can see we've added the, the signage with the red lettering as an afterthought. We just need to pull this together and, and rethink it. I think, you know, that'd be more than appropriate as part of the process.
Hey Mayor, could I add one thing to this? When, um, when we're telling them where they cannot park, can we also, I know this is getting a lot of signage, but can we direct them to where, the overflow parking is appropriate and where they should be parking to hide there?
Absolutely. We should, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's hard to say, no, you can't do it, but we should give them a alternative as well, yeah.
I, I don't think this is going to be palatable, but I, I feel compelled to, to, to mention it without the data. I know we don't have the traffic count data, to show that many cars go up, can't find a spot and go down, but anecdotally, I think Mayor, we were, we, we saw that, the three minutes that we sat outside on the parking strip, but, is there, and I know that Salt Lake County wouldn't be pleased, but is there a way that we, and I know that it sounds like the um, Planning Commission already stated like as soon as we get the parking that we maybe move this parking area to ADA. Is there, is there something we can do before that though? Cause I just, I guess there's not, there has to be at least 12 parking spaces down in the dirt area now, but I just wonder, I just, I just know, like you all said, with COVID, with coronavirus, people aren't driving together. So there's many more cars and more people are hiking and, I just don't really see this problem going away until November.
You know, one, one thing we can do is like we did on a couple of things and I talked to actually Martin Jensen today and, and uh, on some other issues. So, let's, let's communicate with them. Let's have them participate with us in finding a resolution, but I, I don't think there's any question that, there's not enough parking at the um trailhead itself. And I support uh closing down the public parking other than the ADA parking and moving it down. We just have to logistically, figure out how that works and what happens when you're under construction down below. But I think we can talk with the county and see if they'll give us latitude to manage our problem, which I think they would personally.
Mayor, may I, may I clarify? So help, help me understand working with the county to manage the problem, like.
Well, what I'm saying is the county was the original, I don't know if it's landowner, it's Julie Peck dabbling, and it's her program that guided the building of the amphitheater and the access and all that stuff. So I think we have a, a responsibility, if it's, I don't know if it's moral or legally, to communicate with them of what we're doing, because I know if, if we don't maintain the site, the, the walkway stuff, it's the county that'll give us a call and say, hey, you're not cutting the weeds down. So there's something there that we need to communicate with them. And um, th- there may be some value that we, we can't even recognize by having that conversation as soon as possible. But uh, I think like Christine mentioned, the signage is critical. The painting in certain areas were red curb. I think that's critical. Going, getting the petition going as fast as we can and follow the same process we did at uh 2500 East or 2700 East, they should say. And Banbury, that was successful. I think it's been four or five years later and I think that was, it was a good process and a, and a good outcome. I think we need to have, have the same thing here and show our community up there. They were proactive in making some things happen as, as soon as we can. Yeah, it's a real opportunity as well. For the comments about uh, Mike Johnson, some of his outline.
Mayor, I have a quick question. On the, the permitting, how did that work? I mean, we, we're talking about people that drive around and then we assume they leave. The permitting, how did that work? I know that we're apples, apples and oranges on Banbury. How did that, did you say the permitting was done at Banbury or was not done?
Banbury on twice, well, Banbury going east and west and then 2700 East going north and south. We just, we went through a process with a petition, meeting with the neighbors and Scott will remember this well, and we agreed on an area that has no parking during certain hours because of the outdoor pool.
It was more of a, it wasn't a resident permit allowed. It was just during the summer from this hour to this hour. It's not dissimilar to the uh, no parking during school days around the high school.
Yeah, but the point is we had a petition, we met with the residents and the, the uh, no parking area actually shrunk once we tried to implement because some people did not want it, but it, it was a process that's, conceptually pretty similar. Now, this would obviously be different in that it would be permitted, but I think again, the same idea is restricting parking, for the benefit of those residents, but not being inundated with non-resident parking, non-residents parking in front of their homes and going up and down the street, which is in essence a nuisance, so. And, so Mike, what do you, what do you need to proceed?
This is helpful. I, I got some good feedback. Um, unless there are concerns with it, uh, we will plan to proceed with, uh, actually making sure all the residents get the, the part, the permit tags in their cars, which I, I think should help. I think enforcement's done a, a fairly good job, but it does become difficult when, when you don't know which cars are supposed to be there and which aren't.
How do you, how do you define the area that's permit only?
We've got, it, that's a map I showed. Let me go back to it here.
But is that map been formally adopted somewhere? Is that an arbitrary map or?
This is, this is a map of where the, the signs are.
But is it, is it something created by uh, a resolution somewhere or?
Well, that, these, these permanent parking signs, we're not, that we can find created with the same ordinance process that's in place now. I, I believe that the ordinance was put in place after the permit parking signs here were already in. So it was established um previously under some other authority that I, that I could not verify. That means that they've been in place for a long time and we have enforced this previously. So, so I do think that, that we have the authority to, to continue to administer this. But we just want to make sure that we're actually following the, the ordinance and getting permits out to the residents there.
Yeah, as long as we can't be challenged by someone who feels that we're, stepping out of bounds, but just want to do it right, do it quickly, do it efficiently and uh.
I, I thought the ordinance and the signs were concurrent. Actually, I thought that this was the reason. This, it was this, this neighborhood's request that we went and we developed the ordinance for resident parking. We did not have one prior to that.
Yeah, I, in my research, and I, I believe Paula looked into this as well and, and Shane as well, we couldn't find any ordinance or resolution that, created this area yet. You know, it, it's understood and, and acknowledged by many that it was legally created. So um, I don't know. There, there's some questions I can't fully answer there, but they have been in place for uh quite a number of years.
So why do you need the petition then?
The petition is to expand it.
Okay.
We, where we have a code now, a very clear code and, and we're administering that, if, if it's, this is modified or expanded, we're required to follow that petition process.
So Mike, I have a quick question. If, and I know 45 was just thrown out, but, if the residents there had family gatherings and things like that, they could theoretically buy up those, 45 permits and then would it stop or how does that work?
No, so the 45 is 45 days. If, if you've got someone staying with you for 45 days, a guest permit can be issued. So there's, there's no limit to the number of guest permits. You just have to.
So there's no limit. There's no limit, so.
Someone that's on the actual permit parking list would have to be the applicant for that guest permit.
So it's unlimited amount of permits will be given out? Is that what you're saying?
Well, they're, they're reviewed when they come in. So if, you know, if there's an excessive amount that are reviewed, we might have to limit how many guest permits are issued per property, just, based on physical spacing, but um, but yeah, there's, there's no restrictions and there, there's not a, a moratorium on the number that can be issued at a time or anything like that.
The University of Utah has a similar program all around the stadium up there. We just need to make sure that, once we have permits distributed, that they're not printed and distributed in bulk numbers by individuals who want to, you know, distribute them to their friends to get to the canyon and things like that. So there has to be some control mechanism. Cause I've been involved in another entity that had a problem with that. Um, so we just have to be careful to control it as well, yeah.
Yeah, and well, so each resident will be assigned a, a number and their license plate will be documented. So we'll have a, a database that shows, which cars and which vehicles are allowed to park there and which aren't. So hopefully that would help that situation.
So give me some thoughts on what you'd like the resolution to be if someone parks in one of these zones. And my second question is, I remember Scott's right when um, Kevin Smith did this. I think we did it by resolution, but we can't find a resolution. Do we need to do another one? To be able to effectively enforce it? And then again, my, second question is, do you want them ticketed or do you want them towed? What would you like to see happen?
Well, I think the question is, if Shane feels we need to formalize this through another resolution, then we can determine in that discussion what the consequence is, I assume.
Yeah, I, I think that is, is a part of this process. If we're going ahead with a, a new process to expand the area, we would ratify the creation of the old one. And uh, if we're not going to do that, we probably ought to do a resolution ratifying the creation of the old one. We, we made a fairly diligent search and simply can't find a, a resolution doing this. And so we're not quite sure how it happened.
Chief, so the ordinance does, it, it details the actual penalty. This is just right out of the code as it is today. If you park in a zone unlawfully, it's a hundred dollar fine. If you falsely reproduce a parking permit or copy one and use it, it's a, a class B misdemeanor.
Okay.
All right. Any further uh discussion on this? I think conceptually we're supportive. Mike, you've got some general direction and you can work with Tim and, and hopefully uh with Christine, we can uh send out some level of communication to the community to, get us the petition on the expansion and, and of course staff can look at signage, can look at curbs, and uh bring us back when we get a little more um, a timeframe uh, available for us to look at.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
Okay, let's move on. The next item is police policies and practices discussion. And before we get into that, I want to remind everyone, we will have a closed session. I'd like to do that at 6:30 unless you say you want to meet after the uh, business meeting and that closed session will be talking about personnel, which is kind of indirectly related to other things we're talking about. Welcome Riley. Okay. Tim, let's turn it over to you and introduce, uh, before we start talking about the first item. Maybe bring us up to date where we are on the review um, and timeframe of the August 2nd incident.
Okay, the uh, as we've talked with you, we have three steps in um the review of that August 2nd incident. Um, the criminal allegations step, um, charges are still under consideration by the prosecutors, um, and, and who they're involving with that. Um, and so that is in, in a separate entity's hands and they're doing that review. Once that investigation process is over, um, and uh, all of that concludes, then we will get to a point where we will release the body camera footage because we have grandma requests in for that. Um, but it has to be after the investigation process occurs. So I don't have, I don't have a good timeline on that because they are pursuing that independently and, and that will occur. And then we'll release the body camera footage. Second part is our internal investigations are in process. Obviously, we need to have the criminal um allegation process uh finalized before we finalize our internal investigation. So we're still working through that. And uh, we'll be moving that through that. Um, hopefully have that done depending upon the criminal, side of things, maybe towards the end of the month or the first of next month. And then we're also, we've engaged the independent review, um, uh, working with an entity, which is actually the Attorney General's Office. They're currently conducting um the investigation on that. We'll also be forwarding our internal investigation information to them, but they have already started, um, that process. I mentioned in an email to the council that the mayor and I met with the Attorney General's Office representatives last week. And um, they have the capacity as well as the um, experience to do this. And we feel comfortable in, in them moving forward with that uh independent um investigation of, of that, that proceeding. So, that's where we're at with that process. Um, we'll continue to provide updates with you on that. Um, but those steps are, are in place right now. Then in addition to that, um, moving on to, things that are occurring at the, the state level, even the federal level related to um, police issues and discussion related to that. I sent you communications about Utah League of Cities and Towns that are um involved in what they call the Love, Listen and Lead Task Force. They had their, their first formal task force meeting last week. I actually attended that. It was at the very end of last week. It was on Friday. I attended that. Um, there's representatives from, from uh elected officials, um, city managers, police chiefs. Um, and, and then they have other entities that are involved in that process of review. So they're, they're involved in those meetings um and, and getting information. The meeting last week had a number of, state representatives, elected representatives that came in and gave perspectives from the state. state representatives, elected representatives that came in and gave perspectives from the state. Um, there are a number of legislation proposals that will be moving forward in the upcoming uh, session in January, most likely. Um, related to issues of reform uh, under public safety. We don't have a lot of the details yet of, of, of those, but they are moving forward. A lot of it relates to training. Um, and in other aspects. So, so that's a big uh, part of what is occurring with this Love, Listen and Lead. The Utah League of Cities and Towns is also doing a statewide Y two analytics survey. Um, getting input from residents in both rural and, and urban areas and they'll break it out. Um, just to understand um, viewpoints related to that. They're also going to be doing focus groups on a number of different groups and entities in the state as well. Um, and all of that data will, will help to drive some of the input processes and recommendations that this committee brings forward as well as um, the input that's provided in the state legislation side of things. So there's a lot of things that are happening both on the state level and, and there may even be federal, obviously federal uh, legislation as well that's being looked at. Yesterday, council member Michael and I attended the league policy committee and they provided these updates on what they're moving forward on, which I've just explained to you. And so there's a lot of things that, a lot of discussion that will be occurring on, on this topic over the next several months, especially at the, the state level. So anyway, that's, that is that uh, portion. I'm happy to answer questions related to that. We do have some topics that are on um, the agenda that have been identified that uh, the council members wanted some input on and wanted some information. We have Chief Russo and Lieutenant Bartlett here to, to talk about those elements, but I'm happy to answer any questions on the things that I've talked about at this point.
Before we have a couple of questions on that, I, I want to add just a, a little bit more perspective on the meeting with the Attorney General's Office and, and, and talking to their chief of investigation regarding my concerns about having an outside look at the incident. Um, uh, two things. One is that we asked them, one, that report is complete. We would like them to attend the council meeting and present it to us for question and answering. And secondly, that the, the, uh, the team that will be conducting the evaluation interview on or whatever you want to call it is made up of uh, Attorney General, uh, the Utah State Attorney General's staff that both are from legal background as well as law enforcement background. So it's, it's, it has that, that level of expertise on both sides. And thirdly, it'd be my understanding that once that is presented to us, if we have further questions, we have every right to ask those and pursue it further. So I just want to add that clarification. Tim, correct me if I, if that's, if you understood it differently. Okay.
I, I had one question if it's okay. Um, the intent or the primary focus of the league task work forces to inform legislation for the next, for the twenty twenty-one session, is that correct?
Well, that, that's a big part of, that's a big part of especially what the survey and the focus groups will do. But this task force, I mean, they're, they're bringing, they're, they're having the conversations with differing groups that have differing perspectives related to this issue. And the task force, uh, my understanding is going to be coming forth with recommendations as well. Um, I don't know how and when that all uh, comes forward, but right now they're, they're listening a lot with the concerns um, from different groups. They're, they're talking over those things. They're, they're getting different perspectives and then I think that they'll be formulating recommendations. I just don't know what the timing of that will be. Um, the, the survey portion and focus groups, I believe focus groups are already underway. The survey will be going out um, and administered, I think in September and then uh, and then we'll just have to see from that point. I hope I answered your questions. That was kind of a long answer.
Tim, I've got a follow-up question as well. You mentioned that um, the body cams had been requested under grandma. So is that a ten-day, ten-business-day turnaround time? And how long ago were they requested?
Um, they, it isn't a, a ten-day turnaround. There's some entities that do that. While there's criminal investigations, we're not under grandma, um, with the criminal investigations that are in place, that we do, don't release those until that criminal investigation concludes. So that's what we've done at this point.
But once that's concluded though, they would be released, correct?
Yes.
And that criminal investigation is done by the AG's office?
No, th- this is being done by prosecutors, districts attorneys, district attorney and, and those that they involve.
Uh, so Sim, Sim Gill's office?
Yes.
Uh, at whose direction? Sorry, trying to understand.
Uh, uh, District Attorney Gill's direction.
Okay. Um, and can you confirm how many body cam recordings that there were?
There's a lot of footage. I, I can't, I can't tell you how many at this point.
I would expect that it would be each of the officers was there, should have probably had theirs rolling. Is that fair to say, uh, chief or Dan?
Not everyone there had a body camera on. Um, and then um, we're not prepared to go into any more depth about that information until, you know, that they had a chance to finish formulating their, their criminal charges.
Hopefully that's done sooner than later. It's, it's again, it's been a couple of weeks. Hopefully uh, the end of this week, early next week, that's come to fruition and we can move forward. Back to, to night's agenda. Tim, do you, do you have a specific item you want to go through first?
Oh, Christine's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm struggling here. I, I know the lengths that it took me to get alcohol approved in our city offices and the length of time we spent talking about that, hours. And we had what I consider a major incident in our city. It was on Google, right? If you do a search, you'll get a whole bunch of stuff. Friends from all over the country reached out to me outside of Cottonwood Heights. In my opinion, where we are in the nation right now and in Utah where transparency matters, I feel like we just glossed over this. I, I'm sorry. I think that we owe it to the twenty attendees that are.
What do you propose? We do.
I'm sorry. Did, did you just interrupt me? I, I guess I would like three, three things. Um, first, I would like to understand from a process perspective uh, from Shane. Um, I assume that this decision is made by our city manager and just like confirmation of that, that the council cannot weigh in as to who does the third-party investigation. So that's number one. Two, I'd like to understand what steps we did as a city to determine which investigation or investigator we're going to use. Were there a list of names and we reached out and we chose the best one after interviewing? Or did we just assume it was Attorney General's Office? I think we also need transparency of, from, does the Utah, I've heard rumors that I don't know if it's true. Does the Attorney General live in Cottonwood Heights in the district where this occurred? And what steps the Attorney General's Office is going to make to ensure that there's a wall, that nothing from, from his perspective influences that investigation? I'm sorry, I just, I think we all, for our police and for ourselves, we all want to have the comfort that transparency is utmost importance and that people feel good about it. Cause I have to be honest, the few people that, uh, you know, have heard about this, it just doesn't feel right. And I think we owe it as a city and we owe it to our police that when this investigation comes out, everybody feels good about it. And if we don't feel good about it, then we might need to take a step back and reevaluate. I just want to feel good about it.
Okay, the all three good questions?
I'm not feeling great. I don't.
Nope, three good questions, so.
So I, I can uh, and Shane can address the first question because he was asked on that. On the, on the second question uh, related to the steps to select the Attorney General's Office, I'll address that. Shane, you want to address the first step on the process?
Yeah, and, and by the investigation, I assume that we're talking about the outside investigation as opposed to the criminal investigations. Is that correct? The criminal investigation.
As far as I understand, I'm just gonna, just, just to make sure that I understand because so we have our own investigation occurring. We have Sim Gill working on the criminal side of things. And then we have a third-party investigation, which it sounds like we're using the Utah AG's office. And from what I understand, the internal investigation that we're conducting, that information will then be given to the third-party investigation, the criminal investigation being something outside of those other two. That's what I think I know. I don't know if that's completely accurate.
Yeah, I, I assume that the results of uh, both the, the criminal investigations and the city's own internal investigation will be made available to this outside agency that uh, is, is going to be conducting this outside investigation of the whole incident. And uh, I think that uh, the selection of, of who does that uh, outside investigation to me is an administrative uh, matter since it concerns the um, the uh, actions of, of uh, city, of city staff, basically, police department staff. So I think that that's uh, why Tim has taken the lead on uh, referring this over to the Attorney General's Office for uh, the outside investigation. Uh, Tim and uh, Tim has had discussions with him, perhaps the mayor has too uh, about the uh, the residents of, of the actual Attorney General and and what they think they're able to do within their office. So I'll just turn that over to Tim.
So, well, related to that uh, concern with the Attorney General living in the area, when we met with the Attorney General's representatives, which included the chief criminal deputy and the chief of investigations, they were very clear that the Attorney General has recused from this process and said that he was not going to be part of the process because of, of that issue of living there. Um, we, we had, and I mentioned this, I think at our last meeting, we had the governor call us and say that they're willing to help. We, we proposed to have this outside investigation. Um, looking at options that we have, the Attorney General's Office do these types of things. It's something that they have capacity. Um, and so we reached out to them, set up a meeting to talk with them about that. Was assured in that process and I felt comfortable, I think the mayor did as well, that this was the entity that would be best equipped to do this um, investigation because they focus on the investigative side of things, uh, which is the law enforcement side and they have the capacity with the attorneys that are involved in this process as well. So the bottom line is, we, we looked at this feeling that this would be the, the best entity to address this. Um, it's not part of the district attorney's office, which they're doing the criminal investigations. It's, it's, it's another entity and we felt like they had the capacity and they were the group to do that. That's how they were selected.
And can you speak to what, how they're going to keep the Utah Attorney General um, sort of what, what that wall, how, how it's one thing to recuse yourself and it's another to not get updates and, and talk about things. So what, what, what were the steps that led you to believe that, that? I mean, because I'm gonna, I'm having a town hall meeting on Tuesday. Tally just had one and the mayor and I'm sure the other council members are going to be asked this question. I, I want to feel good. I'm sorry, I think my.
No, let me, let me give what I heard Ned. Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong because I thought it was interesting how Spencer Austin, who's the chief criminal deputy who's right under uh, Sean Reyes. He, he made it very clear and he was almost blunt that he's been told that if his department's involved in any way, that he's not to talk to the, the Attorney General at all, that he was delegated all authority to the chief deputy to deal with this. He just made it very clear that, that, there, there's a wall and there's no, no anything that's going to go on between Sean Reyes and that investigation. And that's, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, but he was, he was pretty adamant, pretty clear.
Did they give you names, Mayor? Do we know the investigators who they will be out of the AG's office?
I know who the chief investigator is, who's, who's leading it.
Yeah, what's his name?
Uh, his name is Leo Lucy.
Leo Lucy?
He's the chief of investigations for the Utah Attorney General's Office.
But, but there's going to be investigators.
Oh yeah, he has, he has a team.
There's going to be other individuals that are going to be meeting and doing these things, so. Did we answer the three questions? Councilmember Michael?
Um, I guess, yes, you answered the questions. I just think that from all of our perspectives, I'll just reiterate it again. For, for our police, I think all of us want to have an unbiased investigation with, with absolutely no potential conflicts of interest. I think we want to all know, we all want the facts and we want somebody to be very objective in reviewing those facts. That's of paramount importance to me. And I, I know that it sounds like the investigator, whose name you shared with me earlier today, Mr. Span, maybe is his name, is an excellent investigator, has good credentials with the FBI and I feel confident with his abilities. I just want to feel like, um, I just want it to be known that there is that potential conflict and that we're going to get a firm recusal from our, the Utah Attorney General's Office. I, I, I don't know how to do that, but whether it's in writing or something, I think we all owe it to ourselves to feel, feel good about it. It's too important to our city. It's too important to the morale, I believe, of our police and to our citizens to not do anything less. And that's why I thought it was worth the extra ten minutes of our meeting today to really hone in on that.
So Christine, just to clarify, are you, are you saying you don't feel comfortable with the Attorney General's taking care of this? Because I guess Sean Reyes has recused himself. Do you say, are you saying you still don't feel comfortable with the AG office investigating this?
I'm saying if he has given a firm recusal and writing or whatever that maybe may need to be, I feel comfortable. I was not at the meeting. I was not privy to the discussions. All I heard was a very small synopsis of that meeting here in this council session. Ultimately, it's not my decision. It's, it's Tim's decision. And so if he feels comfortable and he feels like he has the data to get him there, I just, I want to feel the passion from Tim stating that you feel like this is good. This is, careers are made and died from investigation. So if, if Tim feels like this is, this is going to work, I'm all, I'm very supportive of Tim and his decision-making.
Let me add, go ahead, I'll cut you off. Yeah, go ahead. I, I just want to add to you, when you started out your last comment, you, you articulated very well the importance and the need to this to be objective, straightforward and get to the truth. I articulated that myself next to Tim with the chief of staff because that was my concern. I said, I, I just want to get to the truth and have an objective, honest uh, outside review of the practices and the policies as they were applied. And uh, so I, I, Tim, I, I think I made that really clear to them and he reiterated it back to me. And so I left feeling comfortable, but also I realized, I said a moment ago to the council. Uh, when we asked them, we would like that to be uh, presented to the council personally. We have the right, if we see something that we question or like further information on, we have the right to add to it. We have the right to go further if we want later on as well. I mean, we're still uh, in charge to a degree of, of what, or how we're guiding this. Yeah.
Hey Mayor, I, I, Utah is such a tight-knit community and everybody knows everybody and everybody's related to everybody. I would like to go on the record as requesting outside investigators outside of the state. There's so many relationships are just intermingled in this state and we're, we're such a small state. Um, I would go on the record as requesting investigators from outside of the state.
I think we always have that as an option in the long run, but uh, I'm, I'm supportive of Tim and his process. I think Tim's an honorable man. I think he'll, he'll do a good job in leading it. Uh, it's under his portfolio, his direction, the city manager and, and tells something tells us otherwise. That's, that's my personal opinion. But again, I have no more vote than the other four of you.
Hey, to your point on that, Mayor, this is really going to spread Tim's time very thin, very, very thin. What can we do to better facilitate him? Can we get a second, a second Bianca? He's going to need more. What can we do to better facilitate him? Can we get a second, a second Bianca? He's going to need more help. He, he really is.
Well, I, I hear you on that. And, and we go in, we're going to be talking about that a little later on. But good, good question to raise. Absolutely.
So let, let me, Mayor, if I may say something, and this is in response to council member Michael's question to me. I, I am very comfortable with having the attorney general's office do this, this review, especially since we met with them. Um, related to what they talked about with the recusal, with their capacity, with their expertise on this, I feel very comfortable with, uh, them moving forward with this. And I just wanted to state that to, in response to council member Michael's, um, statement.
Another good thing with that too, is what I was impressed with is the timeliness. They were not putting us off and say, well, we'll start in a month or two either. They would start almost immediately. Yeah. Which I think was positive. So we don't leave people out there wondering when and what's happening.
Well, I guess.
So can you just?
Potential advantage there is that they would be familiar with Utah state law, the statutes that are in place and how they apply. And for them to come up to speed on anything local would be fairly, would be much quicker.
Can we just, can we just, I know I asked this at the last council meeting, but I, and I know it was too early to provide a timeline. But Tim, can you again, just help me understand the timeline? Because I thought we had to finish our internal investigation, the criminal investigation before the, now, now it is the Utah attorney general's office doing the investigation could start. Can you just help, help with the timeframe one more time?
Yeah, the, the, those two, the criminal and the internal investigation, those, those have to be completed before the attorney general's review is completed. They, they can start the investigation process, but they have to have that information as well as part of their review of this whole issue. So like I say, the criminal investigations are proceeding, they're independent. So we don't control the timeline on those. It's those entities. Our internal investigation will take the criminal, um, whatever comes from the criminal investigations and will finalize our report. And then that will all go to the attorney general's office, but they, they can start and be reviewing um, the information, um, and then have that additional information when it comes to finalize their report.
Before we leave this topic, I know I've asked a couple of times about like a decompression meeting where we review the plan prior to August 2nd and we maybe talk about how things went and have a, isn't that what they call it in the military decompression or debriefing? Debriefing. We've, we've not done a debriefing of any kind.
Well, as far as a debriefing, I, I, we can't do that until these investigations occur. We'll, we'll have those, um, but, but we can't impede these internal investigation processes. I mean, one, one of the things, as far as it was an unplanned event, there wasn't a, a, uh, strategy related to it because it was an unplanned event, but we will have the opportunity to discuss that more fully once these investigations are occurred. That's, that's my perspective on that.
You, you told me it's something different last week, Tim, that there was a, there was a written plan going into this.
Yeah, the written plan, that was not correct in what I said. There, this, this was an unplanned event um, that occurred on August 2nd. We, we had planned events that occurred after that where we had, uh, the structure in place, but what I said was not accurate, that it was an unplanned event. There wasn't a strategy going into that because of what occurred in, with that situation. And I think I communicated that in a recent council communication that it was an unplanned event. So I was incorrect in stating that.
But sorry, does that mean that I thought I read, so are you saying that when I thought somebody had said that our police were aware of it on the Wednesday before, Thursday before you? Are you saying that, that we didn't know about the, about this?
No, I'm not saying that. We were aware of that event. We were aware of the event, but it was planned in a park. There's, there's events that are planned in a park and there wasn't a, a, a strategy to address that because it was going to be in a park. When it moved into the neighborhood, it become, became unplanned and going into the neighborhood and into the, uh, onto the streets. And Chief Russo and Lieutenant Bartlett, correct me if I'm wrong in saying any of that, but that, that is what was in place. There wasn't a protocol or a strategy that we had for that event. Um, even though we were aware of it because it was in the park and that's where it was, it was.
It was.
The rally.
Tim, that the actual name of the event was March for Justice. So March was always in the, in the works and, and this same group Dance Dance for Revolution has done this in eight other cities throughout the county. So we, it wasn't anything new that they march around the neighborhood. That's kind of in the title and.
We're gonna, we're gonna get into a debate here and, and I'm not.
It is what it is.
Just, just to clarify really quick, um, we, we were not notified um, by the, the organizers of the event, um, anybody like that, that there was an event going on at the park. Uh, we were contacted by residents of the neighborhood, um, and, and told about it. We did not have an operations plan. There was not, uh, extra staffing. There wasn't anything that we had done on the police department's side uh, to plan for this event like any other birthday party in the park. We don't, we don't do anything for those things and we aren't notified. So we did not have a plan for that. And we did debrief the night of the event in the police department like we always do.
Tim, did we have a request for a permit to outside?
No, there was not a request.
Cause we had a request for another event here on the plaza later, but not that one. But anyway, we're debating that. And, and I understand this is an emotional thing. I understand there's different levels of comfort. Christine's questions are excellent. I understand those. Um, I, I, again, in, I felt better after meeting with the AG's office. I went in a little uncomfortable. I felt more comfortable leaving, believing the option at the end. If in that review and in that presentation back to the council, if something is, uh, inconsistent or we want additional, we can do that. But I, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I don't think the person who lives furthest away is always the best person to do certain things. I think we have competent, qualified people in Utah and I think we can use them. I think people, um, relatively want to do a good job and, and I, I feel comfortable with the people we met with, that they'll do that and they'll take it very seriously objectively. And, uh, I'll give them, I'll give them that, uh, opportunity until they prove me wrong.
Real quick, Mayor, before we leave this subject, can we have Shane maybe address, um, our code regarding protesters that leave a park and walk on the streets? Can you talk to that Shane?
We got five minutes before a closed session. So I don't know if you want to try and do that Shane or?
Sorry, having a little trouble with my unmute button. Um, we have a special event permit, uh, process in, in the city uh, for people that want to use public streets. And, uh, and so, um, I, I don't know whether any sort of inquiry was made concerning that. Apparently we weren't notified, uh, even that, that the street was going to be used. Uh, so, um, but anyway, that process exists. That is, that is the main process that I can think of under the code for use of public streets. There obviously are, um, public forum concepts, uh, that, that are constitutional. Um, and there are, uh, there is authority that, um, for example, City Hall Plaza is going to be, uh, likely viewed as a traditional public forum. Uh, sidewalks are as well and so, and some use of streets, uh, can be. Um, but there is also authority from the U, the US Supreme Court that, uh, streets can't be blocked, that government is, is authorized to, uh, prevent use of the streets if it's blocking traffic. So it's a, it's a complicated topic that, uh, um, like that's about all I can say about it, uh, right now with the time available.
I'm sorry, just, I just would like to request an agenda item for, I don't know if it's the next meeting, but school is starting, high school, middle school, lots of, uh, sporting events. And I know that we all probably received, uh, communications from, from parents concerned with, uh, the protests with, um, AK-47s and bazookas and other types of, of guns. I, I just wonder if that's the topic we can put on our agenda to discuss. Um, as a mother of three kids who attend the local middle school, I, I do have concerns and would like to understand, knowing that we can't do much, but that's okay too, to just understand a little bit.
Know that we've talked about, because I bet you I had at least of my three or 400 emails and voicemails. Uh, I did have a couple dozen concerning that. So that's, it's a, it's a good question. Shane, you?
Now, this is, uh, this is something that I've been asked to look at and I've looked at it, uh, very carefully and, uh, unfortunately you're right, uh, council member Michael, there is not much we can do, at least as, as regards the holders of Utah issued concealed carry permits. Um, it's, uh, it's something, it's an issue to take up with the Utah legislature, unfortunately.
Well, okay. I, I understand. I know we don't have time, but if we could add it as an agenda item and maybe get some more uh, details from you Shane, because I know other, other people who may be listening tonight might be curious. So I think it would be helpful.
What I'm going to ask to each of the council members for, because it's, it's two weeks in a row or two meetings in a row that once we've got into the issue of police policies and practices, the discussion, we've kind of got off subject, but yet the discussion's very valuable. I'm wondering what you feel about, uh, submitting something to Tim um, by the end of the week of what is your highest priority discussion item in this category going forward so that we can get it on the agenda? Cause I know I've got a list of 10 or 12 things from our initial discussion. Christine brings up one now that's very important. Um, I know we want to talk more about SWAT and hiring and body cameras. If you would share your priority list, I, I, I think I'm committed to the council and to our constituents that will continue the discussion. But I don't want to just, as Christine said, this kind of sweeps the things out of the carpet or something. Let's get to the point where we, we, we talk about a particular topic and we agree on uh, that we're modifying, uh, a policy or an ordinance or we're satisfied with the education. But we need to not just walk in circles. And I realize right now it's, it's a time when we're just kind of getting our hands around the whole idea of, uh, police reform, looking at some things. But if you would submit to Tim by the end of the week or the, by the first next week, what your priority discussion items are, and if you'll tell us your first one. And then let us look at that and work with Tim and come up with a little bit of a strategic uh, timetable of how we address those, um, uh, going forward. And, uh, with, with the league and the legislature, I know we're hearing things from them on best practices. Uh, but, uh, it's going to, it's going to take a couple of months for them to get ready, but we can work on some things as we wait for them to come up with their recommendations. Anybody agree or disagree with that? Or are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I personally, if I, if I saw the list of discussion items, I'd probably say, yeah, these are the ones that, I mean, I could easily go through a top five and say those will be the ones most important to me.
Yeah. Give us your top five and which is your number one. And, and if we see a lot of those number ones, let's get it on, just get it on the agenda specifically and, and staff are prepared to, to address it and, and educate us.
I agree also, Mayor. I think if we go in too many different directions, we're going to be chasing our tail here. But, uh, if we have five priority items, I think it's going to be a lot more concise.
And then after we do those, we can move on. And if we've got five from five, we could have 25, but we'll come up with some process to get to those top priorities and start addressing them. Okay. All right. Our, our, our time is up on this subject, sadly, but, uh, we're going to keep pushing to get some resolution on some issues. Um, we do have a closed meeting to talk about personnel, uh, will be a little bit related, I think.
Is there a strong desire to do that right now? Or would there be an inclination to continue this discussion? And see what, if we can move through a couple of these others, at least informationally and do the closed session after? Just, just asking.
Well, I guess that's the question. Uh, my proposal is that we move to the closed session and gives us 25 minutes to deal with a very important issue, which is still related and, uh, but I'm more than willing to stay as long as anybody wants to stay. If you'd rather continue this discussion and, uh, meet after our business meeting. Recommendations, anyone?
I propose we go to the closed session.
Yeah. Okay. Cause that'll be, uh, be a good discussion there. Uh, entertain a motion to close the, uh, work session and readjourn in five minutes to the closed session to talk about personnel.
Can Paula send that link? So it's at the top of my email, the closed session link.
Um, then I would move that we close the, uh, work session, open a closed session for the purposes of discussion personnel.
I second that.
It's been moved by, uh, council member Bracken, seconded by council member Bruce. Uh, uh, I'll call for the vote. Uh, council member Bruce.
Yes.
Council member Peterson.
Yes.
Council member Michael.
Yes.
Council member Bracken.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are now adjourned from our work session agenda and we'll meet in five minutes for a closed session. Thank you.